of the Sunland Lutheran Church in Casa Grande, Supervisor Miller. And following him, if we could get Supervisor Miller to lead us in the pledge. So those that wish to join, please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, Creator and Ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us, including Kevin, Jeffrey, Mike, Stephen, and Jeff, that guided by your Spirit, they may be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them our Pinal County may be governed quietly and peaceably through Jesus Christ, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Supervisor Miller and Pastor Jerry Storrs. We'd like to welcome everybody out to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting dated January 17th, 2024. First item on the, item number one is called of the public. One of the things that I'd like to remind the public of is two things. One of them is if you could follow some of the rules and guidelines that we've established over the course of these last couple of years with the way the environment has been, please be respectful and courteous of each other and would appreciate that. And then along with that is, you know, things are going to be said, let's not get our feathers in a ruffle. You know, we might be offended in some way or whatever, and so let's learn to be like ducks and let the water run right off of us. The other thing is, is that when you come before, I was reminded last night when it comes to these call of the public meetings, is that many times the public comes up here and they'll speak to the board and there's, because of the rules, there are certain constraints that are on us as board members in responding. The things that allow us to respond is if we give direction to staff to research anything that comes before us or anything of that nature. And so keep that in mind when you come up here. It's not that we disrespect you in any way. Please don't take it, be offended by it or anything else of that nature because we're listening, we're taking notes as you're talking. Those are of interest to us because it has something to do with our county. So I just want to emphasize that and ask that you respect that, please. So with that, call of the public, consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those that are wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of the public comment will be limited to directing our staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further discussion and consideration at a later date. So with that, if we can open the call to the public, I have some request cards here by individuals that would like specifically to speak. The first one that I have is Catherine Lamar. Did I pronounce that right? Kathy Lamar.
Kathy Lehman.
Oh, Kathy Lehman. And please, because I don't write very well, I have a hard time reading very well either, so.
I'll forgive you this time.
Okay.
Good morning Chairman Goodman, Supervisors. My name is Kathy Lehman. I'm a resident here in Florence. I want to talk about the San Tan Valley Government Center. As you may know, there's almost no place in within Pinal County that a group can use as a meeting space. The lack of facilities for meetings of groups is particularly acute in northern Pinal County. The San Tan Government Valley, the San Tan Valley Government Building has the Bronze Room. Up until January 1st of this year, the Bronze Room could be booked for a meeting lasting up to three hours and after 5:00 PM. Per a communication from the staff there, the maximum allowed time for a reservation after normal business hours is now only two hours. This means that one of the only places to hold a meeting in San Tan Valley with a space large enough for 30 to 40 people, is no longer available to taxpayers and citizens of the county. In addition, I understand that this is the only government center in the county that does not have a facility manager. I believe that taxpayers in Pinal County, specifically those in and around San Tan Valley, should have access to this space for after hour meetings. A meeting realistically cannot start until 6:00 PM to accommodate working people. I look forward to hearing what solution might be coming from the supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you Mrs. Lehman. Next, what I have is Jack.
Matta Chione.
Matta Chione. I'm grateful that I've got this guy right here next to me to help me out.
Yeah, that's my, the Army called me just Jack when I was in there, besides doing pushups, but.
Oh, and if I could just remind people that when you do come forward, if you'll just give your name and then correct me, because I'm going to mess it up anyway.
Okay.
But make sure that you just give us a general area where you're from, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Jack Matta Chione, I'm from the Apache Junction area. And I'm here just basically to ask the board to maybe consider developing some kind of, what we used to call in the military, lessons learned. And that is when something happens that are maybe a mistake or you're working a solution that you take a look at what could have been done better. And maybe the next time the same problem develops, you can then go and use that lesson to make it easier and more, and improve your solution. I give an example, the State Route 88 that my wife and I and Kim Grady worked on. We had a small group that was using the Board of Supervisors building their facility that exempted people from that meeting that should have been allowed for the public to attend and ask questions of ADOT. And in fact, I wasn't allowed to attend, so I did what I did in the military, which is I do, we call it a workaround. You go around people, they're blocking you, to try and get something accomplished. One of the members on that meeting was actually removed because she disagreed with some of the approaches. Now, that individual was very instrumental in getting our State Route 88 Apache Junction Trail opened up, along with my wife and myself. And I'm here to proud to say that we all know, I think it's been reported in the news, that it's going to be open probably in March, and they're already going to be sinking a shovel hopefully in February. And I'm going to be following that. The other thing is I think we may want to take a look at the TPT tax where the $90 million was pretty much locked up in an account because of some bad judgment back on June 21st, 2017. And how to prevent that from happening again might be get a written legal opinion from the Attorney General before you put a tax on the ballot, so you don't have them locked up for four years and not having the roads that money being used. So this is just a suggestion, I think if you take a time and just, I don't know if it's a committee or just somebody, a group of people, in the military we call it, just a lessons learned committee, I think it would really benefit our county. And I appreciate your time and Jack Matta Chione, next time he talks to me.
Hey, thank you, Jack, I appreciate it. I'm just making a couple of notes here. Okay, the next individual that's requests a call to the public is Rhonda Matta Chione. I'm getting it right now.
Good morning, Rhonda Matta Chione, Pinal County, also Board of Supervisor candidate for District 5. I'm calling attention to address the trash accumulation on the 60 from Mountain View Road to Peralta Trail and beyond. I understand the state ADOT had a three month lapse between contracts, but in the meantime, the trash accumulation on that road is beginning to look like a third world country. My suggestion is for these situations is to have an MOU agreement between the county and the state, so when trash is not cleaned up in a timely manner, the county can step in and then bill the state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Matta Chione. Next individual is teen viol, oh, this is regarding teen, it's not a person, teen violence, but Wendy Blavett.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Wendy Blavett and I'm a San Tan Valley resident. Thank you for your time this morning. I'm here today as a mom and caring and concerned community member. We have lived here in San Tan Valley for 17 years and I've never been so sad or worried about our kiddos. As you may know, teen violence is on the rise and it's happening really close to home. Three teenagers recently lost their lives to unnecessary violence. Three families lost their babies and three families have forever been changed. An innocent young man, Preston Lord, lost his life after a Halloween party on October 28th and sadly passed away from his injuries two days later. The individuals who caused this are still on our streets. While I know this didn't happen directly in our community, it did hit way too close to home. Sadly, a violent incident involving the same group of individuals happened here in our own community. And I'd like to thank Pinal County Sheriff's Department for investigating and working hard to bring them to justice. But there's more. In addition to Preston, we lost two more beautiful children, Haley and Casa Grande from a shooting at a party, and Jamir in a park in another unrelated incident, and that was just a few miles away from my home. That's three too many, but that doesn't even include suicide due to bullying that we don't even know about because of the violence that these kids may have experienced. So today I come before you asking to partner, asking you to partner with our neighboring law enforcement agencies to help combat and stop this violence. I know that we have SROs in our schools to help make our kids feel safe, but what about our K8s? The older kids need help too. Let's maybe utilize the posse to help the kiddos have somewhere they can feel safe. Let's empower our teachers and our administrators to punish bad behavior and let's be there for our kids when they need it and let's do our part. Let's be proactive and not reactive. Let's help our kids be upstanders. Let's give our kids some positive resources to feel safe in talking to teachers, school counselors, and other adults and not worry about retaliation. I know we have a lot, a lot of work to do and I know that it's just more than law enforcement in schools, but our kids need to feel safe somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you Mrs. Blavett. An area that we need to really focus on, so. Next one to speak is Kaylee or Katie McPherson.
Good morning. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Katie McPherson. I'm a longtime Chandler resident, but we just moved to Pinal County and Queen Creek and excited to be here today. I echo Wendy's concerns. One of my dear friend's sons was bludgeoned in the back of the head with brass knuckles at In-N-Out in Gilbert. After this happened and after the death of Preston Lord, I was able to connect the dots that we have had over 25 assaults in the town of Gilbert and certainly out here in the desert. Some of our children love your desert areas in the area of Little Mexico and Wagon Wheel where I like to hike. These boys have been traveling around for 18 months beating people up in a blitz style attack using weapons. They have an arsenal of weapons. They are heavily into substances and they are from all over the valley, mostly Gilbert, some Chandler, and definitely some Pinal County residents. And so today I'd like to just offer you some ideas around our Upstander Initiative. I am a mom of four teenage girls who attend school in Queen Creek as well as in Gilbert. The Upstander Initiative is a convergent program for cities, schools, residents, and children to stand unified in behaviors, supporting that of an upstanding citizen. Messaging and behaviors of an upstanding citizen are seeded into our children at all levels, including at the community level and law enforcement and town officials. Consistent regional messaging will infiltrate our communities. The pillars of an upstander are as follows. If you see something, say something, have compassion and validation within your friendships, give back to your community and find perfect purpose beyond yourself, use technology and social media for good while restricting overuse and recognizing healthy boundaries as a form of self-preservation and ethics. I'm here today to thank Sheriff Lamb for his swift arrest of two of at least four or five individuals who hurt a student at Castillo High School. And I'm also here to invite you to be a part of the Upstander Initiative. I hope you will join us in this regional task force. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mrs. McPherson. And then we have John Upton, Horton, okay.
Oh, no way.
Orton, O-R-T-O-N.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is John Orton. I live in the unincorporated area just north of Eloy. And I'm here to talk about election integrity. This last week at our AZRA meeting, Dana Lewis was there speaking and doing training for the upcoming election. Questions were asked of her about people voting in the primary at one location and then in the general election, they were denied to vote there or they were told they had to vote with a provisional ballot. Dana's comment was that can never happen. As soon as they did the redistricting, we sent out the notice to everybody of the changes. I raised my hand because it happened in our precinct. Pocacho School, people voted there during the primary. Come the general election, everybody on the south side of the I-10, half a mile away from the school, were told to vote provisional. Dana made the statement that can never happen because we immediately send out the notices. My question is, how did it happen? I asked Dana and she did admit that yes, we had problems at the Pocacho School. You know, she went on to say that, but we're changing locations and we won't be at Pocacho. I mean, what difference does that make? We're, you know, this has to be an inside job. It has to be a county employee that has redirected and told those people, you can't vote here. Because obviously the notices never went out to them because they did and they were allowed to vote at Pocacho School on the primary. So please do an investigation. We know that there was an unusual high number of ballots that didn't get counted because people, for whatever reason. So provisional ballots were issued and that was one of the reasons why it took so long to get results. So if it happened in one location, you know, was this something that the elections director, obviously it's a precinct, is this the function of the recorders off? I don't know, but you guys need to find out the answer to it. The other question that I asked Dana, like because she got up and told us about all the cameras that we're going to have, how everything's going to be transparent, I asked her, are they going to be up to FBI standards? And she kind of looked at the ground and said, no, they're not. What the heck is going on? I mean, this is election maladministration. You give us those cameras to give us a sense of security that our elections are going to be secure and then, I mean, I've been here two years asking for these FBI standards. There, you know what needs to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Orton. Is there any others, this is the last, Mr. Orton was the last card that I have. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak? Mr. Rett.
I'm Noel Rett from Eloy. Thank you Supervisor Goodman for your comments regarding call to the public today. Much appreciated. Thank you Supervisor Miller for a productive meeting yesterday. I'm hopeful that the county can study and implement the senior property tax credit for volunteer service in the schools. And thank you Dana Lewis for your hard work towards the 2024 election. Again, much appreciated. A few months ago, Supervisor told me he didn't have much interest in hearing about federal government issues during call to the public. I truly wish there wasn't a constant need to bring these issues to the fore, but that need presents itself day after day and must be addressed. For example, the government shutdown that is just two days away. A bipartisan agreement was reached in March, then reneged on by the Freedom Caucus Republicans, leading to the removal of Speaker McCarthy, and three weeks of inaction as they selected the next speaker in the most inane manner possible. Now, a new bipartisan agreement has been reached and the Freedom Caucus is threatening to again renege and possibly remove the new speaker if he doesn't cave to their demands. If they do, will they take another three weeks to name a new speaker? I wouldn't be surprised. Using articles from Reuters and Forbes magazines, here are just a few things to expect from a Friday shutdown, with a string of other negative ramifications to come on February 2nd. Airport security screeners and air traffic controller workers will require to work without pay. Training for 1,000 new controllers would stop and the TSA wouldn't be able to hire new screeners. Food safety inspections could be delayed, oversight of the derivatives markets would cease, the markets that got us in big trouble before. Public housing subsidies and low income housing aid would be at risk, as would be farm loan programs. Funding for military construction projects such as housing and other facilities would expire. Contractors not paid and new contracts, including renewals or extensions, would not be awarded. Half of the Pentagon's 800,000 civilian workers would be furloughed. The GI Bill hotline disconnected. Veterans transition assistance in the National Cemetery Administration unavailable. Most inspections of hazardous waste sites, drinking water, and chemical facilities would stop. Workplace safety inspections limited. The Security Exchange Commission would suspend most activities. And 10,000 children from low income families would lose access to Head Start. Obviously, these issues are vitally important to Pinal County. And once again, I call on Pinal County citizens and the board to notify Representatives Biggs and Representative Crane that the shutdown they're spoiling for is unacceptable. I find it interesting that Biggs, along with Texas extremist Chip Roy, have complained that Republicans have nothing to run on in the 2024 election. Spoiling for a shutdown shows yet another example why. That's well worth remembering in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Any others that wish to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good morning. This is Tom Bean of Casa Grande, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For decades now, four, maybe four decades, I have been working to try to help the community of Randolph. We tried to get the city of Coolidge to admit that these residents were paying taxes and deserve something from Coolidge. And I was always told, no, we can't spend taxpayer money outside of the city limit. And the board always kind of turned their back. Today, I got a chance to drive back out to Randolph and see what's going on. I was going to park and take some pictures of what's going on. I couldn't park. There were so many county vehicles. There were bulldozers, road graders, diggers. It was unbelievable. I think every maintenance worker in Pinal County has to be in Randolph now improving. I thank Supervisor Kavanaugh, I thank Supervisor Miller for getting all of this started, and SRP for doing their little bit of a part. And any board member that was part of this, the county managed, I don't, there are so many people I'm sure that need to be thanked. But finally Randolph is getting their justice. If the county workers could find a road that doesn't have a name in Randolph, or maybe they can just make a new road. I'm sure a number of you remember Sergeant Melvin Moore. He was the unofficial mayor of Randolph. He was an extremely good friend of mine for about 40 years. He was the first black deputy with Pinal County Sheriff's Department. That was a groundbreaker by Sheriff Reyes. He was proud of that. That was his badge that he wore, not just the sheriff's badge, but I'm a deputy, I am a sergeant. And I would love to see a road or something named after that man. You may have to make a brand new road to do it, but do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Do we have any others that wish to speak before, before the board? Seeing that they're, oh, yes ma'am, come on up.
Good morning. Good morning Supervisors, Chairman. My name is Bridgette Crosby. I'm from San Tan Valley. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Blue Stripes others. Okay, my mistake, I have to talk later, sorry.
Oh. That's why we have Natasha here, so help keep us in line. Any others? Seeing that there's none, we'll close call to the public. There's a few things here that I've taken some notes on that I'd like to give some direction to staff. One of them is from Mrs. Lehman. In regards to the San Tan Valley Center that we have, we've had some discussions centered around this. We need to continue that and figure out a way that we can be more accessible to and make the building more accessible to our, our citizens that are out there. That was one thing when we put the money into it, it was so that we could have a gathering place for citizens and things of that nature. So we need to figure out how we're going to do that. So staff, if you could do that. The next one has to do with Mr. Orton's request, if we could have a look, you know, figure out from the last election in regards to the provisional ballots and things of that nature, what are we doing this time around? And I'm sure that Dana is going to address some of that throughout her reports with us, but if we could get some updates on kind of what happened and then what assurances we have going into the, these next elections this year that's going to prevent that. The other thing is Ms. McPherson and Mrs. Blavett, Plavett? Blavell. This has hit home for me and this is something I'd like to see our staff or Sheriff's Department or county attorney work on some of the issues surrounding teen violence, you know. I know the Lord family. Preston used to tease me all the time. He has, two of his best friends are young men that I've known very well and so, and he always hung with them. And so, that has hit home when it comes to teen violence. It's unfortunate, but these are areas that we need to help assure the health and safety of all citizens and especially our future generations coming up. The other one has to do with, I liked what Mr. Bean said. I think honoring some of these police officers and those that have devoted their lives in naming of a road on, I don't know if we can build a brand new road just to name it for somebody, I don't know, but if we can, let's do it, right? But I think that's a great idea and I think that's something we ought to look to. For me, oh, and then the trash along the Highway 60. I know Supervisor Sertie has devoted a lot of time in cleanups and things of that nature out there in his district. This is a personal appreciation to him for that, but as we continue down the road, there's adopt the highway programs and things of that nature. Maybe if we can work with Supervisor Sertie getting that information. He, I know he's doing a good job, but you know, any, on all of our districts, we've got trash along the roads. And I think that's, not you, you're out there picking them up, right? I think that's all, anybody else want to give some direction or anything to our staff? Okay, all right. So let's go on to the next item, which is. So, let's go on to the next item, which is, and you know, I think it was a good segue into this with what Mr. Bean talked about, our staff and what has happened in Randolph. And so, with that, these are some presentation of some of our staff members, and I'll turn the time over to you Leo.
Thank you Chairman. Yes, we have the honor and privilege to celebrate three longtime county employees. The first is Sylvia Anderson, who started out 30 years ago as a custodial worker and is currently an administrative manager. So, thank you and congratulations Sylvia, and I believe Danny's here to make some comments as well.
Good morning. I'm Daniel Casillas Jr., Deputy Director for Pinellas County Facilities Management. As Mr. Lou mentioned, Sylvia's been with Pinellas County for 30 years, started in 1993. In that time, she's been, she started off as a custodian, became the custodian secretary, moved over to facilities office, and was our facilities office secretary, administration assistant, and now she's my office manager. So, you know, it shows that, you know, staying with Pinellas County in all these years, you're able to promote within, and Sylvia's been, done a great job. And I just want to thank her personally. I've worked with her for 15 years of my 17 years in Pinellas County. And thank you Sylvia.
Thank you.
If you, if you could hang around because I think they're gonna want to do a picture following all the other presentations. Okay Leo.
Next, we have Pamela Thompson from Juvenile Probation, who's been with us for 25 years and started out as a clerk and is currently a surveillance officer. So, thank you Pamela, and hello Denise.
25 years with this young lady has been a joy. She started with juvenile court services 25 years ago as an administrative assistant, and she liked the work so much, and she enjoyed engaging with the kids at the front desk that she decided she wanted to promote and be a surveillance officer. And she's been a surveillance officer for most of her career with juvenile court. I asked her supervisor to just tell me a little bit about the work that Pam does, and what, what they, what really kind of stood out to me was that Pam spends a lot of time with the kids in the community. She heads up a lot of community events. She's the star of the show most of the time. And just a really fun example is, I guess, over the game event in, in Coolidge, she came dressed as the dinosaur. And so, the children were lining up, taking pictures with Pam as if she were Santa Claus, and so, they really liked that. But Pam makes connections with kids. She knows how to connect with kids, the families, the youth in the community. And a lot of it is because she really cares. She cares about the work that she does. She takes the kids hiking. She helps them try to find employment. She shows up to their sporting events, sometimes after work hours, just to be there to support and cheer the kids on. There's never a job that Pam says she won't do. She's been kind of working in the detention facility since we've been short-staffed, and she does it with a smile most of the time. But she is, she's truly a hard worker, and she does make a difference. So, just want to congratulate Pam for the 25 years.
Last but not least, I don't know if he's here or not, but we have Adrian Leos, who was hired 25 years ago as a detention aide and currently serves as a lieutenant. Lieutenant Leos is with us? Okay. Well, thank you Lieutenant Leos, for your years of service, and congratulations.
We'd like to, if you're okay with it, we'd love to have a picture with all of you. Okay, let's do it. It's always a pleasure to, to hand those certificates out, you know. I think I've heard Miller, Supervisor Miller, on numerous occasions say he's never stated a job longer than, I think this is where the positions he's in right now, is probably the longest job he's ever had at one time, so.
Nice job.
Yeah. So, I, my hat's off to you. Our county wouldn't be running very well if it wasn't for our staff. You heard Mr. Bean come up here and, and give praise, and we've heard a lot of praises about many of our staff and what they've done. So, let's move on to item number three, county managers' report.
Thank you Chairman. First, I want to congratulate and thank Marissa Mendoza for shedding the interim director title and being appointed as our public health director. If you want to know more about her, you can look it up on the website and see her bio. And then in celebration of the National Medical Legal Death Investigator Week that you proclaimed at the last meeting, we do have a video that shows some of the work that they've done, a recent grant that they've been awarded.
The National Institute of Justice offers an annual grant. It's called the Missing and Unidentified Human Remains Grant. It offers up to $500,000 to six counties across the country. It's a significant amount for a small office like ours. For our office, $500,000 is about half of our budget.
There are a couple of things that went into why we were selected. I think first is that we do have a very firm understanding of where we stand and what we need.
We can use the funds for anything to undertake the project of identifying human remains and assisting with identification of missing persons. So, that can encompass salaries, DNA testing, forensic odontology analysis, anthropology analysis. The most inhibitive part of getting remains identified is the financial cost for DNA testing. We have not had the opportunity to do that for our cases because the state lab and the FBI federal lab are backed up. They have such a backlog that they cannot accept new cases. So, at this point, we would have to pay a lab to do the testing that we need. That's what this grant is for. This will help us do that.
Since 2017, we have about 20 sets of remains that are still unidentified. They are still here at our facility without names. So, we're hoping that the funds from this grant, we can at least take steps to work towards an identification mainly in the form of DNA testing.
We'll get calls from local law enforcement agencies about different scenarios where human remains are found. Very often, it's migrants that have crossed the border and died during that process. Those are the hardest to identify. They're nearly always skeletal remains. Photos from families and different types of tattoos or scars or marks that they have are no longer present to help identify them. There's also scenarios where people aren't migrants, that they're just unidentified. It could be someone that's without a home, and they're just transient in a, in a part of town where people may know of them, but they don't know who they are specifically.
As an anthropologist, I would examine the remains to assess for what we call biological profile. Are they male or female? Are they between the ages of 20 and 40? Are they younger? Are they older? Are they white? Are they black? Are they Asian? Then also possible height. So, it's not going to be an exact, they were this precise age, this precise height, but just to give a kind of, this is more of what we're looking at.
The other reason that I think we got this grant awarded to us is because we also incorporated into our project populating the missing persons databases with more missing persons. There's a national DNA database called CODIS, and when someone is missing, law enforcement would typically request from the family DNA samples of the family members. Occasionally, they can get it if they have items from the actual missing person, like a toothbrush, a hairbrush. But typically, what's done nowadays is to get family reference samples is what they're called. So, they will get a DNA sample from, let's say, a mother and a son, or a mother and a brother, and populate those into the CODIS database. And then eventually, if we enter an unidentified remains into that same DNA database, there's a chance that it's going to show a relationship match to the missing persons.
DNA testing is highly reliable, but if we don't have something to compare it to, the results of the DNA analysis will then remain in that database. So, if five, 10, 15 years down the line, family decides to come forward and say, hey, I want to put my own DNA into this system, it will then be there to match in the future if that were to happen.
Missing and unidentified human remains are considered the nation's silent mass disaster because there are so many missing persons and unidentified remains that have not been associated back to each other yet.
It's greatly satisfying to be able to make those connections and be able to provide answers to families, provide closure to families who may have lost their loved ones years ago.
Everybody deserves to be buried with their remains and have their family know where they're buried and take care of them. And right now, these remains are just here. We don't want to get rid of them into a burial site that the family doesn't have a chance to go to because we don't know who they are. So, we're gonna hold on to them until we get them identified.
Is that it? Okay. Good video and good resources that we have available to us. Item number four, this is each of our opportunities to give updates on our district, districts, and so, I'll start off with, we'll just start here from the left and I'll work to the right. Supervisor Sertie.
I have videos. You want me to go last?
I, yeah. Let's go, let's go from the right to the left then.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to the City of Maricopa on the ribbon-cutting of their new municipal courthouse last night. The Maricopa State of the City address will be held January 31st. For those who'd like to attend, with a reception from 5:15 to 6:15 at City Hall. And I'd like you to save the date for the Hay Duke Building dedication. We're tentatively gonna do that February 21st after the BOs meeting at 392 South Main. The, the building that houses our office currently is where a lot of folks left for the military. That was a bus station, and this was the last place that many service members' families ever saw them. And so, they said their goodbyes there, and so, we have a nice plaque that we've ordered, and we'll, we'll dedicate that tentatively on the 21st. And the 79th anniversary of the Iwo Jima flag raising will be Saturday, February 24th at the, at 3, 8:30 a.m. and at the Ira Hayes Veterans Memorial Park in Sacatoon, and that'll be a nice event.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Kavanaugh. Supervisor McClure.
I'm easy. I don't have anything of significance to report on this week.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Miller.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna, I hope I'm not breaking any rules here, but the Randolph project is, is probably one of the better things that we've done, and there is a video out there of some of the, the activity that's taken place. And the working group, which is consistent of, consists of residents and county staff, we meet about once a month, just for kind of a planning meeting, and Mr. Moore's name comes up quite frequently. I, I honestly believe we'll do something out there in the future, so it's, it doesn't go unnoticed, is what I want to say.
Okay.
But other than that, I think everything's going good in District 3.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May I append to Mr. Miller's remarks there?
If he, you yield to him?
Yeah. We're gonna cover a couple of things during the fire hydrant discussion, but for those who don't know, Mr. Moore was murdered. He was 85 years old, and he was murdered by a 20-year-old there in Randolph in an argument over a, over a stolen item. So, it's important, not that we recognize him, but we were talking about violence earlier, and here we have a 20-year-old killing one of our very valuable citizens, so, for those who didn't know.
That's a good segue. Thank you. Before we go to you, I'll just, real quick, if that's okay? Okay. For District 2, we've, we have several meetings that are gonna be coming forth to the citizens in regards to our maintenance tax, and it pertaining to all of our roads and infrastructure will be outlining everything that we're gonna be working on into the future. People are pretty, you know, it's pretty obvious, a lot of the work that we've been doing in that region, but we just want to, I just want to make people aware. Look for those dates. We'll be posting those not only on the road, you know, with signage out on the road, but we'll, through our social media and things of that nature, so keep those in mind. We, we had a good discussion with some residents in regards to the LG plant and some of the work that's gonna go surround that with realignments of Jermaine Road and things of that nature that's gonna really help out that rural community just to the south of Jermaine. That's gonna be pretty substantial for them to be able to maintain their lifestyle and the way that they are living and protect some of the school area there. So, with that Supervisor Sertie, take us home.
So, District 5 is just full of positive news today. When I ran for this office, there were two major things that I wanted to accomplish, and one of them we're gonna be starting soon, and Leon Thomas from BLM is gonna address that in just a couple items, so that's gonna be very positive. The other one is, you probably all saw the news on the State Highway 88. Fish Creek Hill is gonna be opened, and five years ago, we started a committee, and U.S. Congressman, the supervisors from Hila, Maricopa County, so many people have, have chipped in on this. The state legislators, Kelly Townsend was vital in securing funding to do the study on, on getting ADOT to, to know what they had to do. The State Historical Preservation Society checked off on doing it to modern standards, and then finally getting ADOT to the table was, was a, was a big one. And we ended up with the plan we wanted all along from five years ago, just get it open, and then as the money becomes available, we'll, we'll shore it up later. So, that's so awesome, and everybody made their voices heard, and it was, and it was great. Then the other one, like I said, I do have a video or two here. About a year ago, I got a request from Adobe, can we do a cleanup? Like Apache Junction has free dump week. Gold Canyon and the surrounding area can't participate because they're not in the city, just like spending tax dollars out. So, Joe Ortiz and Republic Services, Emma from Republic Services, we came together and we hacked out a plan, and it finally happened not long ago, for people to dispose of large items that won't fit in your dumpster. And our crews were out there, and they were actually enthused, and it was, I don't think it really cost the county that much because those crews were doing something anyway. They could be cleaning this stuff up later, so let's let the people do it themselves. They could be cleaning this stuff up later, so let's let the people do it themselves. So we have a video that Ray from Public Works did. And let's watch that.
We're out at Gold Canyon today. We're doing a community cleanup event. Supervisor Sertie, along with Development Services, identified a need. We've never done a community cleanup like this before. This is a chance for people to bring their big items that you cannot put out at the curb in your trash can. It's furniture. We're taking televisions, electronics, metal, tires. It's a chance to get rid of that stuff. The main reason we want to do this, we want to stop people from dumping stuff out in the desert. That's not where the trash goes. Unfortunately, they don't know what else to do with it, so they put it out into the desert. These events hopefully mitigate that. The unincorporated areas don't have the regular trash service where they have an opportunity to get rid of any of the big items. Those that are incorporated have some options. So this is the opportunity for them to bring this stuff, to get rid of it. If you're not able to get out to the event when we're having a cleanup, you can always take the stuff to the landfills and transfer stations. Go on our website. We identify all of those. We do have free dump days for the residents throughout the year. Go on our website, pennell.gov. You can check, see when those dates are.
So I didn't know Ray would be doing one, so I shot my own early on in the morning. So let's see what me and Mishka thought of it. So Mishka and I, Mishka's overseeing this, watching the Gold Canyon cleanup community event for big items that you can't fit into your regular dumpster. So far, here comes a toy. All the kids would like to have that, I bet. So far, we've had about 20 people. Good to keep these tires out of the desert. That's always a terrible thing. And there's a special process for those. We got some big appliances. Republic Services has donated these three dumpsters. This all ends at 3 o'clock today. There comes a kitchen, everything but the kitchen sink? No, they got the kitchen sink too. That's a bathroom sink, actually. So this is how it should work. A toilet, that's interesting. Christmas trees. So glad that we could make this happen. Mishka's got to investigate everything that hits that pile. So that's how it's going down here. Got some snow in the mountains. There was more yesterday, of course, it's melted off. But this is it. Thank you to Emma and Republic Services for doing this. So it ended up, over 120 people brought stuff out. There were over 100 tires. And we want to make this an annual event. And I want to thank the Gold Canyon Community Church that made their parking lot available. And we ended up sweeping that up with push brooms and left it like it was. So the very, and we'll make it better next year and hope to do it after Christmas to get rid of big stuff. So thank you.
No, thank you. And I think that's a big reminder for all of us. I think each of us, each of us in our districts have days that are free dump days for the unincorporated areas of those specific. We just had ours this last Saturday, Friday and Saturday. It'll save from dumping out in the desert as well as some of the dumpsters that are it, some of the commercial sites. And so, thank you. Okay. Item number five, discussion approval/disapproval of the proclamation designating court-appointed special advocate CASA of Pennell County 35th Anniversary Month. We've got Denise, right? Good to see you.
Nice seeing you. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Denise Smith. I'm the Juvenile Court Director. Today, I wanted to speak just a little bit before the proclamation about CASA. Going to provide you with some facts and just let you know just in general what we do with CASA. We have four coordinators, Pam Burke and Lisa Madrid Schlecker, Amanda and Veronica Marchetti. We have two admin assistants, Tani Inariga and Jody Wheeler, and then our supervisor, Donna McBride. Just to speak, just for a few seconds about the CASA program, I was just talking to Pam. When I came on board 37 years ago, we didn't have CASA, but we're celebrating our 35th year. And we had one, two positions at that time. So obviously, we've seen a growth in the CASA program. The program currently has about 70 volunteers. They are volunteers, but they really do work like part-time employees. They have a lot of responsibility. They're required to do visits, in-person visits with youth, attend court, and they're also kind of part of a special education. They help the kids drive through and get some help with special education and medical appointments. And that's just to name a few things. We have the staff that I mentioned that provide really awesome mentorship, and these volunteers do also support foster kids. So we have just some real quick stats. We have 453 volunteer advocates that we've had between the period of 1989 to now. We've touched the lives of 2,737 children. Our staff or our volunteers have volunteered over 106,000 hours. That equals a savings of 1.9 million to our county, an average of $18 per hour. And they've spent over 121,000 of their own money on the child traveling for court visits, et cetera. So I'm proud of the staff and even exceptionally proud of the volunteers. It's not easy to get volunteers to do this type of work because, like I said, it is not just volunteer work, it is part-time. So thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Any discussion from the board? So do I hear a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? It's unanimous. Would you, could you read?
Read it.
Would you read it?
Yes, if you would like for me to.
We would, we'd love it.
Okay. Whereas court-appointed special advocates, CASA is a citizen from the community, specially screened and trained, appointed by the presiding juvenile judge to protect and represent the best interests of an abused, neglected, or abandoned child involved in dependency proceedings in juvenile court. And whereas, the goal of the CASA of Pennell County program is to recruit, support, and retain CASA volunteers who are representative of our communities while maintaining ongoing public awareness efforts that promote the growth of the program. And whereas, CASA of Pennell County recognizes the efforts of our volunteer advocates who have for the past 35 years donated over 106,000 hours and traveled nearly 972,000 miles on behalf of 2,737 child victims in our county who have found permanency and/or adopted with the help of their CASA advocate. And whereas, CASA advocates are dedicated to making tomorrow better for our most vulnerable children. They exemplify the American dream that we can change things, make things better, and solve problems when we work together through volunteerism. Now therefore, we, Pennell County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as the 35th anniversary of CASA of Pennell County and honor it as such, CASA of Pennell County 35th Anniversary.
Thank you. You want to get a picture? Of this proclamation? Yeah, let's do it.
Have that staff come up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, let's get the staff up. Do we want to go down there?
Do they want us down there?
Do you want us down there?
Just the chairman.
Let's go.
Come right up here. Just a tiny bit more. There you go. And... There we go. There we go. Now I see everybody. Okay, and happy faces, three, two. Nice, one more. Three, two, one. Stay right where you are, just one second.
All right. Now we're on to item number six. Denise, you're back on. This is in regards to disapproval, approval/disapproval of the proclamation designating Human Trafficking Prevention Month, January 2024.
Chairman, members of the board, again Denise Smith, Juvenile Court Director. Human Trafficking Awareness Month was established in 2010 to provide awareness to assist in identification and prevention of human trafficking. Pennell County Juvenile Court Services has enhanced and grown efforts since 2016 in the identification and awareness. We dedicate ongoing efforts to collaborate with community partners and provide services and support to survivors of trafficking.
Okay. Is there any discussion or anything from any of the board members? You do? Yeah, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Denise, could you sort of explain how sex trafficking, human trafficking impacts people here in Pennell County?
You know, I'm going to turn that over to Stacy. She's our, she is our liaison and she does a lot more work in this area and she can answer the questions for you. I'm positive.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you ask that question again, please?
Could you explain to the board and the public here how human trafficking and sex trafficking impacts people here in Pennell County?
Yes, like Denise had spoke, we have been working here with Juvenile Court Services since 2016, identification of youth that are involved in juvenile court that are suspected or confirmed victims of trafficking. It's probably over 200 youth right now that we have worked with that we have identified as at-risk, suspected or confirmed. Those are youth that have touched our court system in some way, shape, or form. And those youth are from Pennell County or have an attachment with Pennell County. Maybe they were placed at a group home facility or have come to our detention facility or residing here in Pennell County. So we work with our advocacy center, our Family Advocacy Center, to do multidisciplinary team meetings in order to provide services and support to those youth.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Stacy, could you state your name and your role here at the county?
Yes, Stacy Blackburn with Juvenile Court Services, Division Manager.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that help? Does that, okay. I think you were doing that more for our public than anything. Any other discussions or anything? Do we have a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item six as presented.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? We did it. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. I'm reading it again. Whereas, human trafficking is a form of victimization that can affect anyone and particularly targets vulnerable populations and negatively impacts our communities. And whereas, human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, transported, or obtained for the purpose of commercial sex, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, or slavery through force, fraud, or coercion, or if the victim has not reached the age of 18. And whereas, human trafficking denies freedom to 24.9 million people in the United States and around the world. And whereas, women and girls are disproportionately affected by human trafficking, accounting for 28.7 million or 71% of trafficking victims. And whereas, the International Labor Organization estimates that human trafficking is at 150 billion industry worldwide and that 99 billion is generated from forced sexual exploitation. And whereas, the Human Trafficking Council and the 2021 Youth Experiences Survey have found the average age of entry into sex trafficking for Arizona youth is 13 and 16 for labor trafficking. And whereas, the 2021 Youth Experience found that two out of every five participants experienced at least one form of human exploitation. And whereas, youth who have experienced sex trafficking are significantly more likely to have experienced a multitude of challenges such as mental health struggles, substance use disorder, and significant trauma prior to having been trafficked. And whereas, a minimum of 57% of youth who have experienced sex trafficking in Arizona have also been involved in the child welfare system through the Arizona Department of Child Services. And whereas, a 57% of youth who have experienced sex trafficking in Arizona have also been involved in the juvenile justice delinquency system. Whereas, Pennell County probation flagged 30 juveniles as at-risk, suspected or confirmed victims of sex trafficking between October 22nd, October 2022, and July 2023. And whereas, Pennell County Juvenile Court Services is working in collaboration with law enforcement, advocates, survivors, and the Arizona Department of Child Services to increase capacity to identify youth at risk, locate youth being trafficked, and serve those who have survived. And whereas, Arizona policymakers have worked diligently to combat human trafficking through the adoption of laws prohibiting and preventing human trafficking. And whereas, the governor's Arizona Human Trafficking Council has made significant strides in the areas of public awareness, victim services, data collection, and training in order to protect Arizona against this crime. And whereas, Arizona is committed to ensuring it is a zero-tolerance state for any form of human exploitation. And whereas, Arizona is committed to protecting victims' rights and restoring their freedom and dignity. Now therefore, we, the elected supervisors of Pennell County, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Okay, good. What's that? Oh, pictures. Let's do it.
And, three, two, one. Nice, one more. Happy smile. Three, two, one. There we go.
It's always good to get behind stuff like that. So now we're on to item number seven. Ms. Crosby, you're on. This is in regards to discussion approval/disapproval of the proclamation recognizing Blue Star Mothers' Day, February 1st, 2024, to commend the Blue Star Mothers and stepmothers who have a son or daughter who is serving or has been honorably discharged from the Armed Forces of the United States. Ms. Crosby.
Thank you, Supervisors, Chairman Goodman, and good morning, everyone. I'm here today speaking on behalf of Blue Star Mothers of America and also Blue Star Mothers of Maricopa. We have been supporting our troops, military sons and daughters, for over 82 years. And it is our goal to grow and support the military families throughout Pennell County. Currently, there are two chapters left in Arizona, and AZ-7 is based in Maricopa. And we would like to be able to designate February 1st, 2024, as Blue Star Mothers' Day in order to reach more military families throughout Pennell County.
Okay. Any questions or anybody has any discussion that you'd like to do? All right. With that, is there a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number seven as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you so much.
We're good. Yeah, it's been approved unanimously. You're welcome.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
All right. Whereas Blue Star Mothers of America Incorporated was founded as a patriotic service organization on February 2nd, 1942, with the purpose of uniting mothers with sons or daughters in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas on February 1st, 1942, 399 mothers, members of the Armed Forces, held their first meeting, and this year is the 82nd anniversary of that meeting. And whereas on July 14th, 1960, Blue Star Mothers of America received its charter from Congress, Public Law 86-653. And whereas Blue Star Mothers organized its first chapter in Penile County, Arizona, on June 12th, 2007, and Chapter AZ-7 is one of only two chapters left in existence in Arizona. And whereas Blue Star Mothers and all military mothers make enormous sacrifices while their sons and daughters are providing for the defense of the United States. And whereas Blue Star Mothers pack and ship thousands of care packages every year to members of the Armed Forces deployed overseas, volunteer to help homeless veterans, provide support for wounded warriors, visit with hospitalized veterans, honor fallen heroes during funeral services, and offer compassionate community for the mothers of men and women of the Armed Forces serving in harm's way. Whereas Blue Star Mothers promote the values of the United States and Penile County, demonstrate a patriotic spirit, and advances national sense of pride and appreciation for the men and women of the Armed Forces. And whereas February 1st, 2024, shall be designated as Blue Star Mothers' Day and further proclaim that the Penile County Board of Supervisors supports the designation of Blue Star Mothers' Day, which honors and recognizes the contributions of the members of Blue Star Mothers of America and all military mothers in Penile County, and the important role Blue Star Mothers play in supporting each other, members and veterans of the Armed Forces, and to encourages the people of Penile County to observe Blue Star Mothers' Day, to support the work of local chapters of the Blue Star Mothers of America, and to support the creation of new chapters of Blue Star Mothers of America in other cities and communities throughout Penile County, and to support the community outreach of local chapters and communities throughout Penile in order to assist, encourage, and support military mothers, fathers, families, veterans, and supporters. Now therefore, the Penile County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim February 1st, 2024, as Blue Star Mothers' Day throughout Penile County. Proclaim the 17th day of January 2024. Thank you. As the mother of three U.S. military members, I just really want to thank you for your time in helping us make this something, more of a movement in Penile County.
Okay. We'd like to take a picture with you if we could.
Sure, yeah.
There we go. And, three, two, one. Nice. Big smiles. Three, two, one. Thank you. Actually, hold that up for a minute.
You know, when it comes to our military, and there's a lot of sacrifices, especially, I believe moms probably sacrifice and suffer the most when their kids go off and things of that nature. So appreciate the moms and all the moms in our great areas that we live, especially here in Penile County. So we're going to move on to item number eight. Mr. Brother Sertie, or Jeff Sertie, Supervisor Sertie, if you could introduce this?
So another item that's years in the making. We've had kind of a problem area because of four different land jurisdictions. You've got state land, Bureau of Land Management land, city land, and national forest land, all running together. People didn't know how to use it, and people were camping illegally, and there's some squatters. There's also some truly homeless people that everybody would like to actually help. And finally, after all this time with, working with Leon and the Bureau of Land Management, they've come up with a way to turn this into a tremendous positive from being a negative. So Leon, if you could explain what this long-term plan is and what it could mean to everybody.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. I'm Leon Thomas, and I believe, create, and manifest things in existence for a living. Right now, I just happen to be doing it as the district manager for the Phoenix District Bureau of Land Management. I brought with me Matt Drainick, who's our assistant field manager, and also brought Chris Wonderly, who is our public affairs specialist. Supervisor Sertie is right. We have a very complicated land jurisdictional issue in that area, but I think that we came up with a positive solution. Just to give you a quick history lesson, I was called about three years ago now by members of the community, called, emailed, everything else, about the unsheltered population that was living in and about the area. Their concerns were that, one, they didn't feel safe recreating in the area. Two, they thought that, you know, they were causing some of the catastrophic wildfires that we had seen that previous summer in the area. And then the final thing was really just trying to get their arms around just what was happening in and around the area as far as other uses, as far as OHV and everything else. And so my staff and I took a three-pronged approach, and the first prong was this, and this was actually, in my opinion, the most important approach. And that was making sure that the people that were unsheltered in the area had an opportunity to get the services that they need. To be quite frank with you, you know, people in the community really didn't have an appetite for helping some of those individuals out there. I brought this to Supervisor Sertie's attention, and he was tremendous in introducing me to the Genesis Project and other service organizations in the area. That coupled with the partnership that I created with ASU Action Nexus on Homelessness allowed for us to provide some social services for the individuals in the area. Now, we also knew that we had illegal camping area in the area, I mean, legal camping going on in the area, totally different beast. We were handling that in a different way, but I really wanted to make sure that the unsheltered population was taken care of. And so back then, moving all the way through now, we armed our law enforcement rangers and our park rangers with informational brochures and other items so that these individuals could get the services that they need. The second prong to this approach was going to be getting our fire crew out there and cleaning out some of the vegetation through veg treatments and creating some hazardous fuel breaks in the area. We did that the very first summer, and it was a very successful project there. We worked along with state lands and Forest Service and some others to make sure that we were able to bring that project to fruition. The final piece is what you're seeing here. And when we took a look at this and we analyzed what the current uses were out there, we realized that the primary use out there was equestrian. There was already an area where we had a primitive, non-official equestrian staging area, and I walked out there and I said, hey, how about we make this official? In doing that, we started talking to members of the community, and we saw that there really was a need for possibly a second staging area and some other things out there. And so when we took a look at this, our decision, as we were moving through the entire process, was that this would be best served as an equestrian staging area, an equestrian area for the community. So as you can see there, we took the entire acreage, and we're basically going to coordinate off, and it's going to be primarily used for equestrian. Now, we have some special recreation permit holders out there who are, you know, using it for, you know, off-road vehicles and things of that nature. We will still honor some of those permits out there and allow for them to be able to access the area for those uses. In addition to that, we will help to improve some of the access up into Bulldog Canyon up there so that we can still have the off-road recreation vehicle opportunities in the area. We'll just coordinate and direct it to an area that's already created and designated for that. So I see this as a win-win, as Supervisor Sertie was mentioning. We were able to pull in the input from the community to ensure that this was something that they actually wanted in their backyard, and I have a sense that, you know, most in the community are happy with our decision. Next steps moving forward. We actually have our team on the ground right now, out there blocking off some areas, getting some areas staged for construction. They started this morning. We actually have enforcement authority, which started on January 5th to be able to move some of those illegal campers from out of there. There's a 30-day appeal period to that federal register notice that gives us that authority. So from January 5th to February 5th, what we're doing is we're doing soft notifications. We're going out there for the next 30 days or next two weeks now and letting people know, you know, what the new use of this area is going to be, and let them know that, you know, they are no longer able to camp and/or stay in that manner, out in that area. In addition to that, the signs that we're going to post out there, not only for the recreation area, but also for the closure, will be putting social services information on those signs for people that still need those services. And we are also working with a team to have a group of eight to 10 individuals who will be walking the ground over the next 30 days and possibly beyond, offering services to people who still may need the help out in the area. I'll pause there for questions.
I have some questions. We don't have anybody here from PCSO, but one of the questions that we hear is, these people are going to go somewhere, and we have to be ready for that, and they may well go to National Forest, which is also doing similar activities. There's going to be state land, the city parks, et cetera. So as those issues come up, we'll work together and try to coordinate all of the different law enforcement agencies and social service agencies to try to help them. So my office will be ready to take, you know, these reports if that happens, and I'm sure you'll be aware of it also. As this is closed for two years, will it be closed? Can you ride a horse across there? Or is they're going to try to get them to go around it in the interim?
We did the closure for two years just to ensure that we had ample time for the construction. We don't anticipate that it will be closed for the full two years. It's going to mostly be administrative access, but we will allow for people to access it if they come to our office first and let us know why they'll be in the area. We also are working with the ghost town out there to ensure that they have the access they need. We're going to give them a permit to give them access. And so on a case-by-case basis, we will allow for people to be in the area.
And if everybody that's watching at home sees on the map, that is the ghost town property that is completely encircled there by the BLM.
Yes, and so we had a meeting with them yesterday and talked through some opportunities there for them to be able to access areas that they need to access.
But it's exciting, and we're going to have, you know, I always say that up in that area, there's more things to do than anywhere in the whole valley almost, other than professional sports teams. So this is going to be another jewel for us to do.
Absolutely, Supervisor. And I want to say, you know, my district spans from the Utah border all the way down to the international border with Mexico, have five counties, work with 11 tribal governments, and I want to say Supervisor Sertie is probably the most active supervisor in our district, purely political, on the ground. You do great. You're involved in meetings. You set up meetings, community activist groups. You're out on the ground with us. You're calling me monthly. You're totally engaged, and I just want to tell you that I commend you for the connection that you try to make with the agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. You guys don't want to picture with me?
No. I'm surprised you asked.
Item number nine. Ms. Lewis, Dana, are you here? There you are. Discussion of updates related to the Election Department and County Recorder for operations and preparation of upcoming elections.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Penile County Recorder. Updates from the last Board of Supervisors meeting. The Elections Procedure Manual was approved on December 30th, 2023. We've been reviewing this and a part of this process for about the last year. Have already started identifying any changes to our internal desktop procedures. Over 40 Penile County employees attended the signature verification training on January 5th. This training is facilitated by an independent forensic document examiner. We actually requested that she present here in Penile County to save time and energy for our people having to deploy out for the training. We are happy to report that that was a success. The 210-day notices have been sent to jurisdictions for the primary and general election of 2024. They were sent January 9th, and we've already started receiving those back. As a continued effort for, to communicate with stakeholders, we presented an update to the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association on January 11th. Binders are being returned from our ballot proofing team starting January 12th. We've also partnered with another county that we share vendors and equipment styles with to test our contingency operations plan for emergency preparedness. This was also accomplished on the 12th of January. We contracted with a professional Spanish translator to review all ballot audio and print communications. This task took several days and resources within our department, but we have received a certificate of completion. Additionally, as previously discussed, we had worked with Legal to update the Intergovernmental Agreement, or IGA, form that jurisdictions use to contract for election services with the Penile County Elections Department. This new contract is for a two-year term of service ending in non-federal election cycles. In layman's terms, what this does is allows us to have an IGA in place with the jurisdictions for two years, so we're not chasing information from the jurisdictions that want to do business with Penile County Elections Department. Uniform and Overseas Citizens Absentee Voter Act, or UACVA voter ballots will be sent on February 3rd for the PPE election. For the past six months, we have been examining processes and policies, getting back to basics, and ensuring everything starts with compliance of statute and the 2023 EPM. To confirm these procedures work, the Elections Department is conducting a mock election on February 5th. This exercises to weed out areas for improvement and efficiencies, stress test staff and equipment, and put forms and audit documents under one last microscope. To round out the week is our internal logic and accuracy testing, where we will expand the number of test ballots to further review the improbabilities of any statistical anomalies. Historically, decks were approximately around 100 test ballots. This cycle will be testing over 1,000 plus all of our ADA equipment to be used on election day. The Arizona Secretary of State's logic and accuracy testing is scheduled for February 13th. Members of the community are encouraged to attend and may reach out to their party chairs or contact the Elections Department for more information. The department has put together a political observer training presentation that will be available on the website next week. The last day to register to vote or update your registration is February 20th, and early voting for the PPE election starts February 21st. Yesterday, excuse me, we met with the chairs of the Joint Legislative Elections Committee to further discuss opportunities to avoid busting federal deadlines due to potential recount concerns for the primary and general elections. These productive discussions identifying solutions look at a potential to move the 2024 primary election up a week, along with other modifications to statutes. A heartfelt thanks to the members who attended and brought ideas to the table. We now meet with the EOA, the Election Officials of Arizona, and Recorders Association memberships later this week to vet these ideas and ensure that voters can participate in the electoral process in an efficient and legal manner. The Green Party received recognition in Arizona, and voters may now update their registration if so desired. We are still recruiting for election cycle temps for the Elections Department, so if you are not selected to be a poll worker due to the reductions of polling places used for the PPE, we encourage you to please apply to be an election cycle temp. for the PPE, we encourage you to please apply to be an election cycle temp. Pre-election communication meeting for the PPE is scheduled for February 7th. You will receive information about that via email. And regardless, the Office of the Recorder, voter registration, early voting, and Elections Department continue to prepare and are able to work through obstacles that may continue to present during a busy and important 2024 election cycle. We continue to educate voters on their personal responsibility, having a plan to vote, knowing where to vote, and how to update their voter registration. I can stand for questions.
Okay. Is there any, Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back on October 31st, we asked, I think Kent Volkmer, about the Internal Procedures Manual, the nuts and bolts of how to run an election. He said you put one together, it's 236 pages, but there's information that's confidential and proprietary that had to be redacted prior to sending it to the board for review. Have those items been redacted? Is that ready for us to review?
At this time, the Office of the Recorder will not be submitting that information to the Board of Supervisors due to the fact that it is proprietary information, and that would be a huge admission from my part in security protocols.
It's proprietary. What do you mean by that?
We work with vendors, and it's basically the keys to the kingdom on how to get in and out of our services, our Avid, our ESNS election, where if I were to present that information, it would create a giant gap in security protocols.
Well, the manual would also include how the election is run, excluding protocols, excluding vendor information. I mean, is there code in there? Is there computer code that there would be? What is, what are you afraid of that would be disclosed to us that the public couldn't see? Tell me, be more specific.
Chairman Goodman.
I'm talking.
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, there is no fear. When you were talking about any process that allows for me to strip away all of the security protocols that we actively put in place to secure the electoral process, to ensure voter registration is accurate, to ensure access to our systems, to make it so that people who are certified election officials for the state of Arizona can work at the highest level possible needed. If I give that out to the public for everybody to review, I have just then taken everything we have worked in the county and in the state for the last several years to modify and fortify. I take that away.
Ma'am, we're the Board of Supervisors, so if we want to see the Elections Procedure Manual in executive session, you're telling us you're not going to give it to us?
In a redacted format where you will not see, then that still runs me into a problem, Supervisor Kavanaugh, because once I give it to the Office of the Board, or the Board of Supervisors, then that becomes public record, and then I can go out to the masses. And that is, that is the concern.
Well, so going back to 2021, I said, you know, I can see problems coming because we don't have a nuts and bolts procedures manual inside the Elections Office. In fact, you talked, you and I talked about problems within the Elections Office. So then, you know, we had an election where some of the audit master audit logs were not reconciled, which that's not proprietary, that's just procedural. So we didn't have a checklist. The Brad Nelson said, we didn't have an internal procedures manual, we have no checklist. Same thing, Kent Volkmer said, we don't have a checklist. And so here we are. Now, this, these five people up here run the county, and you run the Elections Office. We've tasked you with that. We'd like to make sure that what is in that procedures manual, make sure that one person doesn't bypass procedures and screw up an election again. That's my concern.
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, I could agree with the sentiment, absolutely, but still, in this position, my job is to protect the process. What we've done is we've worked with your Audit Compliance Team Protivity to, again, look over all of the investigative tools that were given to us from Mr. Nelson in regards to the lapses in judgment or processes, the audit trails that were negated. All of that was reviewed and has been updated.
And you talked about election cycle temps. People signing up, do you mean employees? Are you inviting the public to be an election cycle temps?
Absolutely.
Which, what, both?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, any member of the public can apply to be an election cycle temp and be part of that process.
How many members of the public versus how many government employees do we have? Do you know that number?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, I currently, under the Office of the Recorder, I believe I have approximately 50 full-time employees with the Elections Department now, and we bring on about 50 election cycle temps. Now, the position of election cycle temp is varied. It's not just one type of, you know, position that they fill. They can be a member of receiving board, they can be a courier, they can be in signature verification. Those election cycle temps who are part of the signature verification process, went through signature verification training and are supervised by an election official for the state of Arizona. We also have people who work in the warehouse during the busy times for our elections.
So how many citizens, non-government people have signed up to participate?
Well, once they sign up, sorry, Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, once they sign up, they become a Penal County employee as an election cycle temp. Now, we also have political observers, and we also have poll workers, but I also understand that under the dynamic of our HR and employee relations guides, that even poll workers are Penal County employees.
So how many citizens have signed up to be temporary workers approximately?
We're Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, we are still vetting those interviews and still actively recruiting for those positions.
So none right now?
I, Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, I currently have, I believe, 24 ECTs that are returning, and we're looking at about another 20 to bring on for the PPE. The hope is to overtrain and be able to bring again election cycle temps that have worked through a smaller election, so that when we go into the hot and heavy primary and general elections, that they have a little experience under their belt and they're able to exercise their tasks at a higher level.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just for clarification. The five of us do not run the county. Management runs, management runs the county. We're merely policymakers and legislative, to be clear. We're a governance board, not a managing board.
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want a little clarity about, are there, are we talking about two different manuals? Or you mentioned a manual in the very beginning that was approved on 12/31/23. Said it was an elections manual. Then we have another manual that has a whole bunch of information on how Penal County runs their election. The first manual you reference to is a state-level guideline, I guess, for lack of a better word. Can you add any more clarity to that for me?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Miller, members of the board. So we're guided in compliance and statute, first comes from the statute or the Constitution. Then we typically resound in Title 16 of the statutes. And then we have the Elections Procedure Manual. This is a document that is updated every two years by the Secretary of State's office and gives us a bigger blueprint of how to work our federal elections and guidance towards our jurisdictional elections. The day-to-day operations, security protocols, you know, how to answer the phones, don't wear open-toed shoes to work because we're dealing with heavy equipment. Those are the internal desktop procedures. In our, under the Office of the Recorder, there are several divisions. We have early voting, voter registration, the Recorder's Office, the AVID Division, and Elections Department now. Each one of those have their own desktops. It's a quick way to get to the process when we're training people.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sure. Yes.
One more question. Would you, would you please explain for the public, cameras?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor McClure, members of the board, cameras. So in the world of elections and ballots, we not only operate in buddy systems where we are bipartisan at all times for optics and for, to reestablish the trust and transparencies in the electoral process, we have cameras in the tabulation area and around our buildings, wherever our ballot drop boxes are. We have additionally added cameras this last year to our signature verification area because ballots will be in that area, even though they're in affidavits, but also into the warehouse area. The reason the cameras are added, one, transparency, and sometimes people who would like to see our processes don't have the ability to get to our buildings to be part of our processes as political observers. So we chose to livestream those. The central tabulation area is always on live feed. All of the other locations and areas that we utilize with those cameras, when we've got ballots in the building, they go live so that everybody can see that there's no tomfoolery going on.
And there's much to do about FBI standard. Could you please explain that?
So I can say, without bracing or breaking any type of protocols in regards to security, the FBI standard that has been referred to several times is more in regards to the quality and the resolution of the cameras that we utilize. In Penal County, we do use a 1920 by 1080 resolution, at 95, 2592 by 1944. So to reassure voters and members of the public, I'm not using trail cams, sir. I'm not using, you know, webcams that you can pick up at the Walmart. We are utilizing, you know, again, commercial-grade equipment that is then put to our servers for review or for viewing purposes.
So high-quality, high-resolution is what you're saying?
Chairman McClure, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I think something that might be beneficial, maybe a work session or something, a little bit more in-depth on certain things, that the discussion here with our county attorney, would that be okay? Even if we have to go into executive session to do that. And then as far as the redaction that's been talked about here, is there, do you have an idea, timeframe, when a lot of that information will be redacted so that you could share?
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, to, we had just recently received the updates from the Elections Procedure Manual. We have been, you know, feathering those into our desktops, our internals. So I would see that we should be able to be at a, what we call a page turner, and make sure we've accomplished all of those necessary updates. Desktop procedures, when done effectively, are maintained. They are living, breathing documents. If we are operating at our best, that means we have innovation, we have ideas, we have creativity, and we're constantly going in there and we're going through those processes. And then as soon as we realize we can do it better, we're updating it. So I could give you a document, but I could tell you in 48 hours, it could change.
Okay. And then in regards to what Supervisor Miller, the difference between the two different manuals, is the one from the state public, is that, we were able to get that?
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, that is correct. Not only is the Constitution and the Arizona revised statutes all available to the public to review from azledge.gov, but you're also able to look at the Secretary of State's website and see the updated Elections Procedure Manual that was approved the last day of December. But you can also see the traction and changes that were made from the previous one. We historically had a Procedures Manual, Elections Procedure Manual for the state that had a lot of layers added to it. We, as a team, went back and really razored off a lot of the fluff and went right back to compliance and statute, and that's where we're at right now.
Okay. And then with the two different types of manuals, or even within the eternal manual, internal manual that we have, there's, some of the things that are probably being talked about and confused a little bit, I think, is that some of the information that needs to be redacted is actually the procedures, so that it, the security aspect of it, if we're, if we're telepathing out there, these are our procedures, this is what we're doing to meet security levels, then we have more apt to, we're inviting more problems. Would that be a correct statement?
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, that is an accurate statement. The Elections Procedure Manual and the statutes provide for a guidance in law on how we must do or conduct our federal elections and jurisdictional elections. The Elections Procedure Manual gives us, like I said, a wider, greater blueprint on how internally we process things, so that for a state as a whole, many of our processes are similar. However, each county in the state, and there are 15, we're all different vote models. In Penal County, we are a precinct-based vote model, and we're one of the few that do that. We are not a vote center model. Additionally, when we vote in person early, we do so at recorder satellite offices. That's different than a lot of the other, the other counties. So if you move from county to county for a voter, it looks different. To make sure that we solidify the education and outreach that we do to voters, we make sure that consistency within our department allows us to be able to answer questions effectively, and that's one of the reasons we use the desktops that we use the way we do. However, when we are talking about efficiency and effectiveness of a desktop, like I said, not only do they need to be maintained, but they also need to be thorough, and that means layer upon layer of information on how to access our systems. It would be mitigating the security protocols that we have put in place for me to share that with the general public.
Understood. Okay. And then this is more of a request for the future, maybe more, more in-depth or an update on what provisional balance are, you know, that was brought up earlier in regards to our call to the public, and, and some of the mishaps that we've had and what we're doing to, to avoid that again in the future.
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, would you like to, me to put that on my next month's or talk about it?
If you want to put it, it's wherever you're most comfortable, but if we could just get an in-depth understanding of what has been brought up and what's been discussed, and that would be great.
Absolutely, sir.
Supervisor Miller.
I'm sorry, one more question, and are we mandated in the big manual, the first manual from the state, to have cameras?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Miller, we are not. We are currently in legislation in reviewing the need to man ballot drop boxes. This is Arizona, sir. In August, it's 120 degrees outside. So for me to put people outside and bipartisan to man a drop box, I think would mean bringing ill to others. So how do I work around that? And I do that by putting our county drop boxes on county property under recorded surveillance.
Okay, then this is a two-step question. Who determined the specifications for the cameras? How was that determined and who determined it?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Miller, members of the board, we defer to our Information Technology Division in Penal County. Those are the officials, and they have that, the subject matter experts there. I would not claim to be that. I utilize their expertise for that.
Okay, that's all I need for now. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you, we have an MOU with Recorder's Office, and you're running the Elections Department right now, correct? Have, are we going to hire an Elections Director?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, in October, we brought on a Deputy Elections Director. Matt Roberts started. He worked through his first jurisdictional election with our department. At this time, we're focusing on an effective 2024 election year. We put that call out to find an Elections Director. Unfortunately, the response back to that weren't what we were hoping for. Going into a federal election year, a presidential election year, we need people who know this world. They know our laws, they know our processes, they know the intergovernmental workings of jurisdictions, the Secretary of State's office, and then, of course, county-level election experience. We found that in Mr. Roberts for a deputy position. To continue to go out and look for that for a director right now, I think our energies would be better utilized by making sure we're doing the best job would be better utilized by making sure we're doing the best job we can for the 2024 presidential elections.
Has Leo Liu reviewed the Internal Elections Manual, our nuts-and-bolts manual?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, I don't believe that Leo Liu has.
Leo, have you?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, no, I have not.
Will you be reviewing the Internal Procedures Manual at the Elections Department?
I will follow the guidance on that from the county attorney's office and the recorder as to the appropriateness of that.
Do you supervise that office?
I do not.
The Elections Department, you don't manage that?
No.
You have a deputy county attorney who manages the Elections Office? Not manages, but oversees it. You don't?
That falls under the jurisdiction, falls under recorder. Do we have assigned attorneys that provide advice? We provide advice, yes.
Well, I'm not, I was asking Leo about, we had a deputy county manager who kind of oversaw the operations over there, so that's been completely removed. Is that right?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, as a board-approved, memorandum of understanding or IGA, but that was delegated.
Okay. So the Elections Department no longer reports up the hilt to the county manager's office in any way, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then do we use a consultant of any kind to help with our public affairs or anything with advertising, with outreach at the Elections Department or their Recorder's Office with respect to elections?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, I guess I would ask you to clarify your question.
When we do outreach, when you talked about mailing and notifying people, is that all internal? Is that an outside agency that we get help with?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, that is a multifaceted task. That is such a big lift to say that we're just doing it internally. I think, again, would not be us operating at the best level we could possibly operate in Pinal County. We not only use assistance from the Secretary of State's Office, the Clean Elections Commission, the County Public Information Officer, Voter Outreach Program Coordinator that we previously had in the department, the different election specialists and certified election officials in Pinal County, but also do at times contract out for services.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or Supervisor Sertie?
I've heard that a lot of poll workers that have worked before have been declined. Have you changed the criteria on who can work and who can't?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Sertie, members of the board, nothing has really changed. I mean, there's a lot that's changed, Supervisor Sertie. A lot of improvements have been made, but the Presidential Preference Election by statute requires that we reduce our polling places by 50%. So if we're reducing our polling places, we're also reducing the amount of poll workers we need. So typically, you know, we have approximately, and again, approximates, 100 polling locations, approximately 100 or 1,000 poll workers if you do the, you know, 10 per polling location. Well, when you reduce to about 50 polling locations, you only need about 50 poll workers. Hence the reason letting people know that if they were not selected to be a poll worker for the PPE election, it doesn't mean that we won't be calling them back for the primary and the general election. Again, we have to bolster those numbers during larger federal elections. It's that we had to reduce the numbers.
That would have been my follow-up question. So will we have enough for those elections?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Sertie, members of the board, as long as our voters and the members and stakeholders of our communities continue to be innovative and integrative in our processes in Pinal County, which means they continue to answer the call of service and become poll workers, political observers, election cycle temps, I believe we're sitting at a database of over 2,000 people for poll workers, so we can't always select those. But yes, I believe we're sitting in really great standing at this time, sir.
Okay. Scenario, it's August whatever for the primary, and once this precinct doesn't have their show up, can you then call in folks at a late date and say, hey, we need people over here and shift them around?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Sertie, members of the board, constantly having a contingency plan and a Plan B in the event something goes wrong is evident. You know, we saw that happen in the primary election in 2022. That's one of the things we learned from. We will have backup poll workers and polling teams. You always make sure you want to train a little bit deeper than you actually need in the event. Life happens, you know, people get sick, you know, there's death, there's traffic accidents that occur. We are absolutely training people in addition to what we're identifying for the needs for the PPE or the other elections with a, what we call, you know, the reserve list.
And lots and lots of extra ballots printed.
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Sertie, and members of the board, yes, we will have the ballots required by statute at the polling locations.
I would want to have more than required.
We'll have more, sir.
Okay.
I'm with Supervisor Sertie on that one. So, okay. Is there any other questions of Ms. Lewis? You know, as always, we appreciate you and your tentative to detail and really doing your efforts to make sure that this goes smoothly and effectively and is very transparent to our public. And I know you get it and we appreciate it. That's why we've asked you to take charge on this issue, so.
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, if I might, you know, when the MOU was first presented and the idea of having to get up every month and let you, as the Board of Supervisors, understand where we're at, I would like to thank you for that innovation because I've been able to use this time to present to voters and to our stakeholders all of the changes that have happened and all of the things that they need to be communicated about, like how to update their voter registration before their Presidential Preference Election because only Republicans and Democrats can vote in that election. And if you're currently signed up as a PND, other, or independent voter and showed up at the polls, you would be turned away. You would be frustrated, and you'd probably get angry with a poll worker because you don't understand. I would like to see that change. I'd like to make sure voters are responsible and they're informed, and I'm able to use this podium to do that. So I thank you for that opportunity.
You bet. Thank you. Okay. Item number 10. Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have much. We're underway with our Legislative Policy Group has met, we met last Friday and went through a half a dozen bills. I don't have a copy of how those all went down, but tonight is reception to meet with legislators at CSA, and so if you can attend, that's great. Tomorrow, there'll be a board meeting at 10 o'clock, 10 to noon typically, and we will do the legislative policy process in that meeting as well, go through the different bills that affect counties and either typically it's a pose or a support or sometimes neutral, just kind of depends. We look at legislation on how it affects all 15 counties. This is not a one-off thing for one county. If a county is pushing for something like that, we ask them to share that on their own, but we're looking at all of these policies or all this legislation as good policy for all the counties. And typically, we're trying to roadblock the unfunded mandates that the state tends to send down to us. So anyway, we're underway, and hang on, it's going to be quite a year, I think. So anyway, if you have any other specific questions about legislation, reach out to me and I'll try and get you more specific answers.
Okay. Thank you. I know two of our board members are going to be meeting tomorrow with CAG. They have a legislative date tomorrow, Supervisor Sertie and Supervisor McClure, and it'll be the same agenda, I think, more than anything, looking at the different bills and things that are coming before and looking at it and trying to decide where we're going to take a position on things. So thank you to all of you for your service and trying to stay on top of these legislative issues. So item number 11.
Chairman?
Oh, yes.
I have a comment on the legislative.
You bet. Lay it on us.
There's, some of the things I noticed, we had, there's proposed legislation, perhaps Supervisor Miller, you can discuss it publicly here, because I think it's really important. The state has a proposal or someone has a proposal to amend the Constitution to prohibit this state or any county, city, town, municipal corporation, or the political subdivision from imposing a tax or fee on any person based on vehicle miles traveled. So are you familiar with that one?
Somewhat. It's, we oppose that because we think that there's other tools that might come down on this legislation in the future, and we don't want to box it in at this point in time. For instance, that might be a tool that you would use on an electric car, maybe. I'm not saying that's what it is, but it's very broad at this point, and we think that that's not good policy. We are in support of trying to establish better ways to fund transportation projects in Arizona. I think I've been working on that for all 10 years I've been here anyway, so, but we just, so there's some strategy to some of that. We oppose it on the basis, we don't want it completely, we want more discussion about how we're going to do that in the future.
And then the one I was curious about was energy production maximum acreage. That one seemed pretty controversial.
Yes. And that's going to be a lot of talk about that going forward, so.
So that one, I think maybe the small counties proposed that to limit the number of acres or percentage of acres that could be used in a county for solar production.
Yeah.
I think it's another way to kind of slow down the solar.
You know, not just, well, in the solar discussion, it is, it's, what we're seeing here is being seen in other counties as well. So that discussion will continue to go on as to how it's limited, where it's limited, if it's limited in the future. So I think that's a watch-and-see one as well. When it's closer to something, if I may, Mr. Chairman. We will talk to the sponsors on a lot of these bills. Staff from CSA takes time to sit down with them and find out the real direction they're trying to go with their legislation, and sometimes we offer up suggestions.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Nobody else, so let's go on to item number 11, our Purchasing Division Report, January 17, 2024. Angeline, how are you this morning?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm good, thank you. Thank you for asking. My name's Angie Woods. I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. I am here to present the Purchasing Division Report for January 17, 2024. First, the board has requested to approve the following purchase request per Pinal County Procurement Code Section PC 1-350, governing competition impracticable purchases over $100,000. The amount of the purchase is $165,195.79 with Shaw's Interior Incorporated. The description is for public health administration building flooring renovation. The department using this purchase will be facilities. Second, we have, the board is requested to approve the following three cooperative purchases above the $250,000 threshold. Requisition number 169413 is with supplier Motorola Solutions Incorporated. The amount of the requisition is $432,357.66. Our Information Technology Department will be using this purchase. Requisition number 169435 with the supplier Caliente Construction for the purchase amount This will be used for construction of the Central Arizona Project, CAP Trailhead Phase Two, and for fencing for the South Florence Trails Projects. Our department using this is the Development Services Department, our Parks and Trails Division within that department. Lastly, requisition number 169448 with supplier Santan Ford in the amount of $248,658.15. The department would like to purchase five 2023 F-150 super cab four-by-four trucks. Departments requesting this is our Fleet Services and our Development Services Department. Within there is the Community Development Division. Are there any questions?
Any questions, board?
I have one.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one thing I want to point out is that this, the Shaw's Interior, $165,195, I read the backup documents on that, and that seems like a lot of money for flooring and carpet, but the federal government requires, I think, a percentage of green content and so on. Do you know any detail on that, why it makes it perhaps more expensive per square foot than ordinary contracts?
Supervisor Goodman, I'm sorry, Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I'm not certain any, I'm not aware of the green efforts.
I kind of blindsided you with that, but I was reading that. And so the public may wonder why it's so expensive. Well, the procurement on that has to meet federal standards, and I think they have to use federal contractors, which I think Shaw's is federally approved and so on. So it takes what would normally be, you know, a regular carpet job and turns it into a higher.
Absolutely. Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, in addition to this, it's not just replacement. They will be, it's an entire project, so they'll be involved in the stripping of the old material, the putting back in the new material, and they're, of course, as you stated, they do have to follow those federal guidelines.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Kavanaugh. Any other discussions or anything that needed, okay. Do I have a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Purchasing Division Report as given.
Second. Got a second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Thank you.
Eyes have it. Yeah, I heard it. Okay. Item number 12, and to stay true with Supervisor Sertie from last year, 12:30, we're going to take, he needs a lunch break, so we're going to give it to him. So we're going to try to hustle through all of this. If we don't, just know that we'll take a short recess. So item number 12, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time that the item is called. So I believe I have one from Supervisor Kavanaugh, correct? Item G, he would like to have polled. Is there any others from the board? Okay. Anybody from the public would like to pull any item? Okay. So why don't we go ahead? Can I have a motion to approve A through P minus G?
Chairman?
Item Q.
Pulling item Q.
Oh, Q? Who's doing that one? Who do I put down? Who's doing that?
Awareness. That's going to be for awareness by your request.
That was my request? I better be thinking about my thoughts real quick, huh? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent items A through Q minus G and Q.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? The ayes have it. Okay. Let's start off with item G so I can gather my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Supervisor Miller may want to chime in on this one as well. And we have some photographs, so we've talked about some things. Can you pull up those photographs, Natasha? So in 2020, before I became a supervisor, I noticed Randolph and heard the stories of the town, and it's an unincorporated area south of Coolidge. And they've sort of been abused and neglected and for 100 years. It was established in about 1925 for sharecroppers and farmers and ranchers and hands to l- to. and hands to, to live there, that area. And about a decade later, it was segregated. The, primarily the blacks were on the east side and everyone else was on the west side of the highway. And hearing from residents, it was sort of on the short end of the stick in terms of county services and didn't get what they thought maybe would be their fair share of attention. And I said to the county management, you know, it'd be nice to see, as a, as a matter of respect to Randolph and its history, curbs and sidewalks and decent streets. And, but one of the first things that happened was we had this fire here, and the church there, the Church of God in Christ, was the center of the community. Community meetings would occur, but then it burned down. And there's no fire hydrants. I said, well, can we, can we get fire hydrants in there? And the, I think it was discovered, and Steve can fill in the details, this is a lot from memory, so if I, if I'm wrong on any point, please correct me. But the fire li, the line, water lines going to that area weren't big enough to accommodate fire hydrants. So the first thing was putting fire hydrants in. And you can flip through those pictures, Natasha. Sorry. There's, there should be one of the fire hydrants in streets. Is there just two?
These are the only three pictures that I have.
Did you send the other ones, Josh?
When were those sent? Do we know?
So anyway, the pictures, if, if we find them here in a minute, will show the progress, and it's really good. As Chairman Goodman has said, and Chairman Miller, it's, it's good to finally, after 100 years, to, to see Randolph served well by the county. And Supervisor Miller, do you have anything to add to that?
I'll just, I'll add a couple more thoughts here. First of all, thanks to staff and Heather Patel and her office, because we were able to do a lot of this work through some grant work. And, and to navigate grants is not something I would be able to do. Anyway, we appreciate all that help there. And it was important that, that we show some, I mean, the need was there. And it, it's kind of shocking to me that it took that long to get something going out there. So the fire, the, the water lines were there, were not sized enough, so through the grant, we were able to upsize the lines throughout the community and put the fire hydrants in. And it, you know, it is something, it's a similar project that we did up in the Hopi Hills area and of north of Casa Grande, or being west of Casa Grande. And the video, if somebody, I don't, I don't know where that link is, but there's a video showing the curbs and the sidewalks, the grading of the streets going. I think there's some asphalt probably going down by now. I haven't been there for a couple of weeks. And the folks that live there are appreciative of what's going on. They, they're, they're thankful, and we're hopes, it is my hope that it revitalizes that community in a way that maybe some of the folks that grew up there will move back there, because the, it'll make the lots a little more attractive, and the infrastructure will be there that will support that type of investment. So it's a, it's, I say it's still baby steps, and there's a long ways to go for that community. But as long as I'm around, I'm willing to help them in any way I can. And thank you for bringing it up, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
You're welcome. And if I may, Chairman.
You bet.
And Supervisor Miller said he'd be willing to help in any way he can, and that is really true for those of you who are not aware. When there is an issue with someone's house out there, that where the county was involved in a grant to help the lady replace her house, meanwhile, it was, the roof was leaking on her old house, and it was going to be months, weeks or months before her new house was built. So Supervisor Miller got out there and climbed up on the roof and fixed the roof on the house that shortly would be demolished. So when he says he's committed to the area, you can believe that that's really true. So thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion moving forward then on item number G?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item G as presented.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay, and yes, I did request this. So item number Q, Jill, would you come up here? I, I think a little bit more in depth about what this is about, because I think, you know, you're dealing with the after effects of much of the juvenile crime and things that are going on. And I think these are positive things that are being done within our juvenile detention area. So you're on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Goodman, Supervisors. Yeah, the juvenile detention facility, we could not do this without a great partnership with those that work over there at the facility, with the Education Department. We've got a great partnership going on there. Last year, I, along with the other county superintendents, approached, or a few of the superintendents, approached Representative Martinez, and we kind of requested some additional money to do one-time projects that, that could be for juvenile in the, in the youth justice system. And Rep. Martinez was able to get us $20,000 for a one-time project, and that one-time project, we're, we're moving on now, and it's a kind of a STEM lab for the students over there. There's, there's quite a list of things we're considering over there, but I know that some of the things that we have decided on, and one of the one that, that is, that students are most excited about is the recording studio. And that can often be, music can be therapeutic for the kids. I know that they do it in Maricopa County Juvenile Detention Facility, and it's been great over there. So we, we're looking to replicate that. In our facility, we'll have some 3D printers, possibly some screen presses. We'll just see kind of where the interest lies, and then also what expertise we can have along with it, because we'll have to train staff on operating that equipment. But it's just an exciting thing for our youth there to have available to them, and it could open their eyes to different possibilities for their future. Any other questions, though? I can.
Any, any questions of anybody? No, you know, there are just a couple of comments that I'd like to make is that, you know, I believe our law enforcement with, from Sheriff Lamb and even our, our county attorney office, with some of the things that they're doing, redirection programs, things of that nature when it comes to our youth. I've been to several of Sheriff Lamb's intervention programs with some of our youth when they've gotten into trouble. And I tell you what, I've been really impressed about some of the steps that we're taking. I've been at the, I've been at the detention center a couple of times to get tours, and now that you're talking about a recording center, I would imagine probably karaoke's going to probably be part of all of that. I'd like to see the supervisors take a tour of that and maybe even participate.
Some guest performers for the students over there? I think that they'd really enjoy that. You know, just, just a few normal guys like the rest of us.
So anyway, I, I just wanted to recognize you guys and everything that you're doing there at the detention center.
I appreciate it. Thank you. We're excited about it.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, can I have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item G.
Second.
Q, yeah.
Q.
The one you wanted.
And you're going to second Q?
And I'm going to second Q.
All right.
Because that's my middle name.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Ayes have it. Okay. Thank you, Jill. All right, next item, number 13. This is a public hearing and discussion approval disapproval of Resolution Number 011724-RD23-104 to accept the establishment of roads for Algarve Place, Rosemead Road, Felix Road, Arvila Avenue, Rama Street, Castle Dell Avenue, Temple Green Road, and Dirt Road. Oh, that's a good one, Dirt Road in Pinale County. We've got Chris. Do we need to add any? Oh, it's too late now. We can't add him now, but.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. Yes, so this is a public hearing to establish the roads that you just thankfully read for me. And this was a follow-up to a previous board meeting where we set the hearing date, so.
Okay.
Any questions on the road, on the roads?
Anybody from the, okay. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up for a public hearing regarding this matter. Anybody from the public would like to, to speak in regards to any of this? No hurrah's or anything? Okay, well, now we'll close the public hearing, and we'll look to the board here for a motion moving forward then.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 13 as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay, now we're on to item number 13.
No, 14.
Oh, we just did, hey. That's why you're here, that's why you're here, baby, is to help me out. Item number 14, another public hearing and discussion of the federal fiscal year 2024 through 2028. This is in regards to the five-year consolidated plan, the federal fiscal year 2024 Annual Election, Action Plan, and the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice under the U.S. Department of Housing. So we have Ms. Patel here. If you could really tell us what this is all about.
Thank you, Chairman Goodman, members of the board, Heather Patel with the Office of Budget and Finance. The item before you today is regarding our HUD funding that we receive. Generally, when I come up before you every year and do a public hearing, it's on our annual action plan. This actually is our five-year plan that includes our first year of that five-year action plan, our first action plan of that five-year plan. So there's just a few things I wanted to, to go over with you. And I do want to point out that we, we had the assistance of a consultant, Martina Kewell, with, what is it, Kewell, some, well, it's, she's a single owner of her, her consulting firm, and she has done these, these types of plans for the state of Arizona and other places for just a few years. She's a young lady just like me, so. But she's well-versed in this, and she is here to answer any questions as we move along in this process, if you had any. You may recall somewhere probably about 15 months ago, we had some public meetings where she facilitated and asked and engaged different organizations as well as yourselves on what our needs are and what are our, our thoughts regarding these programs as well as fair housing. So what I wanted to say basically is that every five years, in order for us to receive funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, we have to put together a five-year consolidated plan. We also have to assess fair housing and look for any impediments to fair housing, and that goes in a separate document that is all part of the overall plan. That five-year plan, we are to identify what our goals will be over the five years. Martina likes to call it our big application, and this is what we say we want to do over the five years. And then every year, we submit an annual action plan that says, okay, for this year, this is what we're going to do, and those projects need to feed up into and complement what we said in the five-year plan. So basically, if we have a, a list of things that we're going to do over the five years, our annual plan cannot be contrary to that. So, oh, master application, there we go, I'm ahead of myself here. Is it possible to make this a little bit bigger? I'm having a hard time seeing it. Sorry. I don't know that, there we go. My eyes get a little wonky sometimes. Okay, so again, the five-year plan, this is actually going to be for the federal fiscal years 24 to 28, which will start July 1st of '24. So that's the timeframe that it will be covering. So we are to establish our goals for all of the programs that we could receive funding through HUD under their CPD or their community planning, development, thank you, Martina, division. And that includes our community development block grant funding, our home program, and emergency solutions. So what you'll see up on the screen here is an estimate of what we anticipate receiving every year, and then of course you multiply that by five, and that's what we would anticipate receiving over the five-year consolidated plan period. We do want to make sure that in our, our projects and in our plan, that we are addressing and looking at fair housing opportunities, making sure that, that everyone has an opportunity for housing and choice in housing, as well as economic development opportunities. So we, we, when we do the plan, we look at a whole range of things, not just those funding sources, but other things that impact the work that we do through those funding sources. And so we did complete a fair housing assessment, a draft of the assessment, as well as the consolidated plan, are, are on our website and have been on there for about 30 days, and open for public comments during this time. And then we also, like I said, we are identifying our first year of that consolidated plan and what activities we want to do for that. Let's, oh, here we go. We did an extensive outreach and consultation service. Like I said, I think it was about 15 months ago that we had a lot of public meetings. We met with stakeholder groups, and we met with staff. We also put out a resident survey, and we got a great response. We, we put it out on our website. We also sent email notifications to different organizations that said, hey, we have this survey, could you please fill it out? And we got 275 responses, so that was great. I mentioned the focus groups. We had, just this past August, September, we held public meetings in some of our communities throughout the counties. We wanted to make sure that we dispersed those meetings and, and could reach everybody. And then, of course, we had a public comment period. We collected a lot of data and information, or should I say Martina, collected a lot of data and information for us and put it in the plan regarding housing, regarding homelessness and our efforts with the Pinale County Coalition to End Homelessness, data and information about our infrastructure that we have, and of course, poverty. HUD focuses their programs on low and moderate income populations, so collecting the information to demonstrate areas that are specifically low income is of importance, because that's where we can then focus some of our projects. And then, of course, in the plan, the draft plan that was put out, we did identify some of our priorities and our goals, and we shared, you know, our whole process of what we've done thus far. And, and then, of course, again, we incorporated the fair housing assessment. So for our five, five, Martina, I'm sorry, my eyes are not working very well, and I can't see that, and if you make it bigger, then we're not going to be able to see it either, so, if you wouldn't mind. I appreciate it.
I don't mind at all, yeah. Good afternoon, Chairman, Supervisors. So what we came up with is we collated the data that was collected and analyzed with the input that we got from the public through the surveys and the stakeholder discussions, and we came up with priority activities. We also came up with additional activities that we could, if an opportunity arose, perhaps invest in. So we set goals for facilities and infrastructure to benefit 35,000 low and moderate income Pinale County residents, to rehabilitate 19 owner-occupied housing units specifically using community development block grant funds. And then if opportunities were to arise, we might look at doing some infrastructure to support affordable housing development, and also to support things like demolition, code enforcement, and human or public services. Those are all options. So HUD requires that we set high priorities and, and low priorities. There's no such thing as a medium priority in the consolidated plan. So we try to capture as many possible categories of activities as possible. When we look at home funds, our goal is to, just using the home funds, we hope to leverage that with other money to construct 13 rental units and 15 homeowner units, rehabilitate five owner-occupied housing units. These are substantial rehab when we're talking about home funds. Assist 10 home buyers to buy their first home. Assist 25 renters with monthly rental assistance. And then should an opportunity come along to And then, should an opportunity come along to rehabilitate rental housing, we think we might be able to do about two units leveraged with others. Emergency Solutions Grant, or ESG, is a homelessness assistance program. We're hoping to assist twenty people who are experiencing homelessness through monthly rental assistance. And should the opportunity arise, add some shelter beds. And then there's the overarching category that takes money from all of the programs for administration.
Can I ask you a question? I didn't, you're on a roll, and I apologize.
I know.
But I think, you know, some of these assistance and programs that we do and that we're doing, like, for instance, those that are experiencing homelessness, is there other resources that we're tapping into to help them become self-sufficient? To where they're able to acclimate back into society somehow?
So by the time somebody who is experiencing homelessness gets to the point where they're actually receiving the the rental assistance, it comes with case management and a whole host of services. Because the goal is is to, as rapidly as possible, get them back on their feet and back into the mainstream economy.
Okay, that helps me. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so program administration.
Chairman, if I may.
Opened up a can of worms, sorry.
Supervisor Miller. Yeah, and this is all good. And I just feel like, though, we're the tiger chasing the tail. Because what really doesn't doesn't come out here, isn't used in any of this discussion, is affordable housing. And the cost is just continually to go up, up, up as a hockey stick. How do we chase that? I mean, these dollars will almost shrink in the ability to provide some services in in all of these categories, in my opinion.
I think that's a very valid concern, and we have seen the cost of development has skyrocketed. You know, not just as, in its incremental way that it always has. And we don't see a corresponding appropriation of additional dollars to make up for that cost or change in the regulatory requirements that allow us to invest it differently. So it's gonna, I think it takes a very creative staff, working with a creative development community to actually make it happen. But, you know, when we talk about, you know, one point, you know, several million dollars are going to buy us thirteen, thirteen, you know, affordable rental units is it's because the costs are so high. And, you know, but, you know, thirteen units.
I hope you get thirteen.
Right. Hopefully, we can do better than that. And and our goal is to always leverage other big dollars and, you know, private financing and other government financing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Package some of that together.
Yeah. And I, you know, and staff has been creative in in finding, you know, relationships and and, you know, getting people to the table. It's, but the cost is the cost is the cost.
Okay. You know, shelter is like one of the biggest things people need. I mean, it's just a tragedy when you see the homeless out there. Draws me back to historical times of the the Big Depression back in the thirties. I mean, it's almost the same scenario. So anyway, I'm on board to help anyway. I can't, that's all I have to say at this point.
Go ahead.
Good, okay. So back to program administration. So we use their program administration funds. There's a cut from each of the programs. It's different for each program. To do this annual action planning process, annual reporting that's required, oversee the programs, projects, partners that we work with, implement fair housing activities. And those fair housing activities are really about community education and outreach, working with some of the entities that specialize in education. Educating our program participates, participants on things like economic opportunity and financial wellbeing. And then also working with community development to look at ways that we can encourage the development of additional affordable housing. So that's all wrapped into the consolidated plan and the fair housing assessment.
Okay.
Are you good, or do you need me?
Yes, that was the color of that page.
Okay, you're good. Okay. You let me know.
Oh, Martina, I apologize. For the record, can you say your name and who you're with?
Martina Kuehl, Kuehl Enterprises LLC.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. Okay. So moving on, that was the five-year priorities and goals. We do want to just sort of jump into each of the programs and identify what we plan on doing for the first year, which is the twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Under the CDBG program we mentioned, we we estimate about one point eight million that we will receive. This funding, all of these funding sources, we really won't know until about March what the exact dollar amount is. So we do put in some flexibility to say there are certain projects that we will adjust the amount that we want to put towards them based on our total funds that we receive. The CDBG program, as I mentioned, is to serve low and moderate income households, residents, people. It also can address a limited clientele. So, for example, persons with disabilities or seniors, projects that are specific to serve that population are also eligible. We can also do projects that are in a redevelopment area. We also are required every three years to reach out to all of the communities within Pinal County and ask them or invite them to join our program. They generally have two options. One, they can join our program, or they can stay with the Small Cities Program through the state of Arizona and work with CAG. The last time we invited our partners, four communities wanted to join our partnership. Well, yes, four communities, Eloy's, Florence, Mammoth, and then Maricopa's slightly different because they can technically be an entitlement community and get their funding directly from HUD. But they don't have the capacity to manage the program. So we have a separate kind of agreement with them to work with us. And then we do this process for them and and do all the administration aspects. CDBG is a very versatile program. You can do a lot of different things with it as long as you do benefit those populations that I mentioned earlier. So there's just a few examples of what we can do with the CDBG funds. This is a list of the projects that we've done over. We have only been a direct recipient of CDBG funds from HUD since two thousand and nineteen. So the list is not that long, but it's it's plentiful, and there's a lot of great things on there, a lot of water, some sewers, some sidewalks. So there's there's a lot of really good things on on this list. These projects are specific to our partner communities and what they have done over the past few years. Now, our home program, this program, we started to receive directly from HUD in twenty twenty. The intent of this program is to provide safe and decent affordable housing for for low-income households. We are mandated to set aside fifteen percent of our funds for for a CHODO, which is a community housing and development organization. And it's it's a specialized designation. And that funding is supposed to go to, of course, develop more affordable housing. We are working with a few people to get them on board as a CHODO so that they can continue to do their good work. We also have to provide match to this this funding source. We could provide it in the form of cash. Or, as Martina mentioned just a little bit ago, we like to leverage resources from other places. So if we were to work with a developer and they had some private funding, we could leverage that and and use that as our match. There's just a small list of of the eligible things that we can do with the home funding. Our owner-occupied housing rehab program, which we have had in place for many, many, many years, is one of the things that we fund under this program. We could also do rental assistance, helping people buy their first home or even developing rental and owner-occupied homes. What we have been able to do, like I said, is our housing rehab, and then we have been funding Habitat for Humanity. They've done two projects. And there is one that's in the process right now, and we have plans for three more. So lots of good things. The Emergency Solutions Grant program, that we started to receive in twenty twenty-one. That program is a little it's a little unsure because HUD takes their magic calculation that they like to do based on your CDBG funding that you receive, and they determine every year if you will or will not get this money. So we have to include this in our plan and plan for it. And then somewhere around March, they'll say, eh, you you didn't get it this year, or you did get it. So we did receive it in twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two. We did not in twenty-three. And that program is specific to benefit persons who are experiencing homelessness. We are required to provide a one-to-one match for that. The funding we have gotten in the past is about one fifty, one fifty-six. We've been able to leverage other outside sources for that match. And we can do a variety of different things. We can do some outreach. We can do rental assistance. And then we could also do some renovations to an emergency shelter and some prevention work. What we have done is the rapid rehousing is the rental assistance. And like Martina said, it does come with case management, so that is very helpful. And then we are also funding some work at the HOHP Transition Transition Center. Let's see here. Okay. What we are looking at doing with the CDBG program is our partner communities were required to submit an application to us, and it was due at the end of December. And from that, we were able to determine how their money was, their portion of the funding would be allocated. And then we internally looked at what are some things that we need in the unincorporated areas and and throughout the county. Eloy plans to do some senior center improvements out in Toltec. Maricopa is doing some street improvements in their Heritage District area. And for the county, what we are looking at doing is a flood control project out northeast, Sandtan Valley area. And we are going to be doing some design work for the San Manuel Se, or Community Center, sorry. And we will continue to do some sewer connections in Colonial Del Sol. And then finally, the Housing Authority, they do have a very old playground out there. So we would like to get that spruced up a bit for for the kids. And then we, of course, have our administration. And then the housing rehab program, we fund it both under CDBG and home. So like I mentioned, depending on our funding and where we are at, if there's any any leftover, the housing rehab is going to be the the pot that we will increase or decrease depending on our funding. For home, there is a slight difference on here, so I'll go over that. Seems like things change every day, but we're trying to keep up. Habitat for Humanity, like I mentioned, we have some more units that they would like to build. The home buyer assistance or the down payment assistance program, we had put out an RFP for developers and nonprofits to submit proposed projects for these home dollars over the next five years. An organization had intended on submitting a request to provide down payment assistance. And that didn't work out for them. So we won't be able to do it this first year, but hopefully we can do it in subsequent years. It is still one of our our priorities. A new leaf is to provide rental assistance. And that is for low-income households. They could be homeless. They may not be homeless. They could just be people who need assistance with with rent for a period of time. So that's a project. And then, again, our housing rehab program that we do internally, that's going to be our the, whatever money we have left, we'll put it in there. We have about seventy people on that waiting list right now. So we could use that money at at all times. And then our ESG program, we have found that the the rapid rehousing or tenant-based rental assistance, the rent and case management is the the program that is, reaches the most people. And so we will be working with a nonprofit to provide that service for us. And then, of course, the administration of of both of those programs. After today's public hearing, where we received feedback based on the plan and the the fair housing document that we have on our website and any comments today, we'll make appropriate changes to our plan. And then we will be returning the beginning of April for for another public hearing and hopefully final adoption of the plan. We are required to submit it by May fifteenth to HUD, after which, then we will get a funding agreement from HUD, and then we execute agreements with our partnering communities or our nonprofits, and that's expected sometime later this fall. That's our our basic timeline. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, it's a public hearing.
Any any questions of any of the board members? Okay, we'll open it up to the public for any any comments. Mr. Ravelas.
I totally agree with an observation that has already been made by, from the board here about affordable housing keeps becoming less affordable. And I'm surprised that this presentation did not touch, for example, on a novel, creative new concept of repurposing for accessory dwelling units structures that were designed originally for, as storage containers. I'd like to hear what, if any, thought was given to using that process in, under the concept of accessory dwelling units.
Any other comments by anybody in the public? Okay. With that, we'll close our public hearing. And moving forward, any other, there's no further.
What's the other to respond to that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I asked for some information response.
No, and I was going to give some direction later on, but that, go ahead, Heather. Could you respond to that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Goodman and board. We have actually been talking with community development. And through our, we have a task force of a few departments that talk about potential opportunities for affordable housing. And we have been working with community development and looking at all of these unique and different opportunities. And so it is something that is on our radar, and we'll be coming back at you with a presentation on something in a few weeks. But that being said, that is absolutely something that we can look further into. We are looking at some other options as well. We're open to options.
So, and I know that Mr. Ravelas was, he specifically stated storage containers as a as a viable option. You know, I've been to numerous places where they've taken commercial sites and and used containers for little convenience stores. And then I've got a friend of mine that's building out here to the to the east of us that's using storage containers to construct his house. And so I think that's, anyway, as you guys do that, as you're talking, maybe that's something that you could include as a, as a, what's an option? Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just because I think, from my mind, I want to be clear on, these dollars don't really give us the the ability to go out and seek new ideas. These dollars are basically, if we have a project, we have dollars to do the project. Is there, I mean, is there money in there for studying methods and of to make housing more affordable? Or is this just mainly the dollars to create the housing or the the shelter that is needed?
Thank you, Chairman Goodman, Supervisor Miller. Generally speaking, the money is to implement, for the the home funding is to implement those ideas. We are looking at other options for coming up with those creative ideas. We are looking at other options for coming up with those creative ideas, other funding sources and other methods. I don't want to put you on the spot, Brent, but is there anything you want to add?
Supervisor.
Mr. Chair, just real quick thing to, Brent here, Mr. Billingsley has given us a presentation on auxiliary dwelling units.
Okay.
In the past, and it's being updated in the codes.
Right, right. Okay, okay.
I don't want to get too far off of this. But, I mean, there are other methods that, and I guess the point I want to say to the public is, I certainly have spoke to staff about other methods and projects and stuff where we can maybe create some affordable housing. I just wanted to be clear that these dollars are, like you use the word implement, are to implement a project more than it is to try and develop a program, in a sense. Is that accurate?
Yes, thank you.
Did you, did you want to add something to it? You are part of the public too, so. Oh, I did close that, so never mind. But anyway, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this has been an enlightening process. I would say that the consultant and Heather have been very inclusive of our department and other departments in the county in terms of coming up with this consolidated plan. I encourage anybody in the public to take a look at the document that's online because it's far more in-depth and provides significantly more information than one encapsulate in a PowerPoint presentation that's supposed to last for 10 minutes. There is a whole section with respect to ideas on housing and ideas on affordability and implementation in the county. And next time we come with a presentation, we'll make sure we touch on that.
Cool. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, this is information only. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item, item number 15, discussion approval, disapproval of the request to create new job classifications to meet the current staffing needs of our departments. How are you, young lady?
I'm well, thank you. Chairman Goodman, members of the Board of Supervisors, for the record, I'm Claudia Lujan, Human Resources Director. And I come before you to seek your approval to create two new classifications for our county departments. The first one is mechanic senior for our Fleet Department. This position performs advanced-level skilled preventive maintenance and repair for all types of automotive equipment and heavy-duty equipment. This position may also assist in training and oversight of our mechanics and technicians. Our market analysis indicates that this type of position currently exists among our comparator agencies. And we seek your approval to make this part of our classification job series for the county. The second position I seek your approval to establish is the purchasing supervisor for the Office of Budget and Finance. This position will oversee and supervise county procurement staff and ensure that purchases and goods, of goods and services are in compliance with the county procurement code. The market analysis of our comparator county agencies and municipal government have positions within their organizations that have these essential functions within their system. The action before you today, coupled with the compensation initiatives and recent policy enhancements that the board have approved, are part of an ongoing effort to become more competitive. They embody our commitment to quality work-life balance and create career opportunities for our workforce. And before I close, I would like to recognize Kim Verdugo and Courtney Obragon. They work tirelessly for our county in regards to maintaining our classification and compensation system. And with that, I open it up for any questions.
Any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have a question?
I was thinking of one, yeah. So, the position for the mechanic, we just need to pay more because the market rate is more, essentially.
That is part of it. But within our mechanic series, we know that we lose a lot of our mechanics to private sector. And this would give us an opportunity to actually have some hands-on training for our individuals to move up.
Okay, good.
And Ms. Lujan, I noticed that you use two different words, comparator and competitor. And that's key to this because we have competitors, well, we have comparators that we go after and look at. But our competitors are the private sector. And that's what we're fighting against, losing our employees to that arena. And we have to maintain our employees.
Chairman Goodman and Supervisor McClure, thank you for making that distinction. And you're absolutely correct. We have to look at both sides of the coin, our private sector and our competitors also within the public sector.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, with that, board's prerogative moving forward.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 15 as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, Randon.
Thank you.
That means we love you, buddy. All right?
I love you, too.
Okay. Okay, on to the next item, item number 16. This is in regard to any of the board members' requests for future agenda items. Is there any request by anybody? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had private discussions, but I'd like to have an information-only public discussion about potential funding sources and the planning to improve Highway 347. The, I'd like to see an executive session for legal advice concerning the Board of Supervisor Oversight of Water Districts as it relates to 11251 and/or ARS 16230. And then I think a citizen mentioned the use of public spaces and conference rooms. So we can have a public discussion about that. And we may need an executive session. I think we had, I recall having a conversation a couple of years ago about this, but I can't remember if it was in public or private. So those are the items that I'd like to cover.
Those are good ones. Anybody else? Supervisor Miller?
Just real quick, I kind of feel bad after I brought up the Randolph project. Not just Heather, but Public Works, Celeste's sitting out there, Joe's out there. There's been a lot of staff that's helped on that project all the way. I just kind of show up to meetings and go, can we do that? Can we do that? You know, that's where I'm at with this. But really, this has been a real great effort by our staff, more than me. So I just kind of felt bad. And when we complete the project, we will have, I hope, some kind of a ribbon cutting and some kind of a video for the whole staff in the future.
That'd be great.
You know, because there's a lot being done out there. That's a future agenda item.
Okay, I like that. I like that.
May I append to Mr. Miller's comment there?
You can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think I mentioned some time ago to county management staff that we could, we really should have maybe the road sign marquees that say, now entering Randolph, you know, historic Randolph or something on the side. So that may be something, since Supervisor Miller's district is there, that may be something we should consider getting done, too.
I think there was actually some talk about that.
Yeah.
When we were designing the roads, so.
Okay, all right, good.
We've talked about that.
And I'm hearing to make that part of the discussion is what I'm hearing. So, okay. All right. Since there's no other items regarding future agenda items, we'll close that. And now moving forward, we have an executive session for 17 and 18. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair, I move we reassess the present meeting, our regular meeting, and open executive session.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in executive session. We are out of executive session. And we are over and out.
Roger Wilcomb.